Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's meeting. And I'm glad to have all of our young presenters here as well. And it is at this time on November 11th, 2024, Monday. I am calling the regular Wausau District Board meeting to order. Ms. Peck?
Sarah Brock. John Krieger. Pat McKee. Jennifer Paoli. Joanna Reyes. Jane Roche. Corey Sellers. Lance Trolle.
Here.
Jim Boucher.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's at this moment that I'd like to take just a few moments to talk about this day, November 11th. This is the day that we hold for all of our veterans and our active-duty soldiers, naval people, Marines, Air Force, Coast Guard, going right down the line. And it's a special time for me because this has been four generations of Bouchets in the service. My daughter is in Germany right now, deployed. And it's a time that I hold very dearly for all of us. And I'd like to just thank all of our families that are here, that have people that are in the service, that are serving us wholeheartedly. And I thank you for them. And I hope you take a moment to say something to a person that has been in the previous wars and is also in active duty at this point in time. So it's a great day, and thank you for being here on November 11th. With that, it is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. And we have all of that due to the fact that we have a free country that we can be educated in. And so that is another plus. Today, we have a presentation. And with that presentation, I'm going to ask Caitlin Landerman to share a brief presentation to the board. If she's here.
Yes.
There you go.
All right. So we thought that that thing would be to hear from our kiddos because they are what makes our school special. So.
Welcome, everyone.
We are from Hewitt Texas Elementary Store.
We are from Hewitt Texas Elementary Store. My name is Eleanor. Tina Donovan.
My name is Ava, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Quinlan, and I'm in third grade.
My name is Maverick, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Guy Toddle, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Serati, and I'm in fifth grade.
Our theme this year is construction because the road to success is always under, always under construction. We work on our growth mindset so we can grow our brain.
We would have loved to bring all of our friends here tonight.
Since we could, please enjoy this video. Some of our favorite parts of the school year so far.
This year for reading, we are learning.
This year for reading, we are learning a lot of new things.
In kindergarten, we just finished off the Chica Chica Boom Boom.
In fifth grade, we have been working on reviewing long, long vowel sounds for really great reading.
We love math, and we just started our multiplication unit in fourth grade.
We, for Lido and me, we want to improve our knowledge of vocabulary and helping all our friends feel cared for at school.
We're working very hard to accomplish these goals.
One lead measure is we will complete three vocabulary playground games per week with 80% accuracy.
Our second lead measure is we will complete the assigned vocabulary checkpoints bi-weekly at 80% accuracy. We had so much fun at our Wausau West volleyball january. We had over 85 of our fifth and, fourth and fifth graders participate.
We want to say thank you for all your support.
We love Hewitt Texas.
Thank you very much. Matter of fact, some of the board members may have some questions for you.
I have one regarding the multiplication you're just starting in math. Do you still do the multiplication tables? Where it goes across and down, you have to write in the answer? Or am I just too old for that? Probably on an iPad now or on a computer or something like that. Maybe they don't do them.
Guy, do you memorize your stuff? Do you have to memorize them all where you have a table to memorize them? Or how do you learn math multiplication? What he's asking you.
That was my answer.
I, I'm actually not in fourth grade for math, so I don't actually know.
Okay. That's fine, too. I'm sure they'll start them at some point. Thank you.
So what was this book we just finished taking? What book did you read? Can you tell us a little bit about that book? Do you remember? What happened?
The letters fall down.
Did they climb back up the tree?
They got hurt.
Did they get hurt? Can someone help them?
The mom and the papa said they're dead.
Thank you for sharing.
Anyone else? Tremendous. Thank you very much for bringing the young ones here. We appreciate that. Thank you. All righty. Thank you for coming.
A little louder than it is.
All right. Agenda item number six. We're going to be moving to the public student comment. And we have one person, and she's been in front of us many times. Dana, I'll turn it over to you. I don't have to go through that whole process.
Nah, I've got three, three quick points here.
There you go.
Hi, everybody. Happy Veterans Day. We are in November. We were talking today and can't believe how it's December in like three weeks. And that is unreal to us. Just a few things from WEA. We continue to support our staff and buildings. Myself and Deb and some of the other exec members are meeting with our buildings just to see where everybody's at and see how we can support them better. We plan to go to the new hire mentee meetings next week and bring dinner and just kind of check in with all of our new hires next week. And then the last thing, obviously, on the agenda is that health insurance piece. Just to encourage you to remember where we're at with all of us to keep in mind those financial implications on all of our staff when we talk benefits and salary pieces. So between a rock and a hard place, unfortunately, but to explore all options. That's all I've got.
Well, thank you very much, Dana. Appreciate that. Agenda item number seven. Approve the consent agenda, appointments, additional staff, replacement staff, contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, terminations, leaves of absence, retirements, minutes, regular session of October 14th, 2024, and the special session of October 28th, 2024. Payment of bills, budget, status, and investment report, donations to the district, Maine Lions Club, AA Seamless Gutters and Roofing, Chatterbox Charities LLC, donor shoe, donor, donor shoes, Rachel, Raul, Bradley, and Karen Lightski, Mary Sue Anderson, Forest Park Neighborhood, Mrs. Gianna Kraft, American Online Giving Foundation, American Legion Post 10, David Hunsaker, Emmanuel Lutheran Church, Joy Carnet's, Marathon County Central Labor Council, and Stephen, St. Stephen's Lutheran Church. I am seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude for the donations to the district. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And again, thank you for all the donations. Agenda item number eight. Wausau West Bleacher Storage Community Room. Board will be presented with additional information regarding the bleachers storage community room at Wausau West. And I will turn it over to the two of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Sharon Gould is with us tonight from Nexus. Nexus has been our partner as we work through this 2022 Capitol referendum. So we're here tonight to talk about the additional storage room for bleachers and other things at Wausau West off of the fieldhouse and then the addition of that community room. So we'll bring it in front of you tonight for a number of reasons, which you'll hear about later in the presentation.
Excellent. So we just wanted to summarize why we are here tonight. So we are reviewing to include back into the project the community education space and the storage addition just to the east of Wausau West as part of the referendum project. Part of the timing right now is we're looking to incorporate it into the existing construction schedule and the work that's going to be happening in those parts of the building. We can touch on that a little bit more as we move through this. And the building budgets based on progress to date looks like it can dovetail a cost increase back affordably into the project.
So we are going to be asking for action tonight. But if it's something that the board wants to consider, we can, of course, bring it back in front of you again.
So this is a summary of the high school plans. So bubble in purple is the two areas we're talking about. The area in the center is an existing storage room, which has a lot of fieldhouse equipment, the bleachers stored into it. And that would turn into a community room and a potential classroom. That's how it was originally designed. And then in the eastern half, the second bubble is a storage addition that it is important to be able to move all the equipment. There's no other good home for it. So if we're going to remodel the storage currently into the community room, that equipment needs a place to go. I just want to point out a little bit, the different colors. This was from the original 95% design presentation we gave about a year and a half ago. Well, it was June of 2023. And I just wanted to note that the different colors look different areas of work. So you can see that there's a lot of coordination of a scope within that space that we're going to be working. So we just want to touch quickly, if you wanted to talk through the numbers.
Sure. Yeah, I can talk through the, the cost portion. So the original design budget that was shared with you was that $1.221 million number. The current construction cost is closer to $1.169 million. So a little lower than the design that was shared with us. I think it's important that you know that the original bid price was a little bit under that $1.169 number. So it is a little higher than when we looked at it. I think it was over 12 months ago at this point. I just wanted to give you that update on the cost.
And so just to walk you through the timeline. So we would like to start the storage addition beginning in December of 2024. Part of the complexity of this is to make sure that it's completed in time, that when we start to work on the community education space, we like to call that the summer slam. So we have the spaces set up to receive the equipment before we take that storage room away and turn it into the community room. So the community education space timeline, we want to begin in June of 2025 once that storage addition is complete. And then we're looking to complete it in summer of 2025 and wrap up all that work. And it dovetails nicely into all the other work that we're doing right now. So streamlining it, it's the most efficient way to proceed with that at this point in time.
Kitchen is also scheduled for next summer, right? Or this, right? This next summer?
So, yeah, the kitchen work is a big part of why this timing works.
I was just looking at the, the entire budget for the whole referendum project set. Originally, $119.8 million. We've made some, some interest on that money. So the total over/under, even including this project, is, with this project, we have $2.3 million that we are projected to still be under budget. Any question?
Yeah, that under, that includes all the elementary work, including grants.
Yeah, none, yes. None of the elementary work has been taken out of here.
Other than the road at Hawthorne Hills because we literally took that out when we started that project.
Exactly. So, right. And then we did have the last couple of projects have come in under what we thought they'd be. So.
Thank you.
Yep. So are there any questions from the board at this point?
Yeah, my only concern is that putting that bump out on that corner creates a blind spot by the doors that go into the gym there, which could be solved with a camera. But because West seems to be so open and that spot would be perfect spot for nefarious things to go on. But I think with the addition of a camera, that would take care of that. I, I can check to make sure that a camera is included in part of that.
Yeah, I, I think it makes sense to move forward with it now to get it to go along with the other work that's being done. I mean, we were holding off, or at least I won't speak for everybody else. I was holding off on wanting to approve this to get farther down the path to make sure we could afford it without taking away from any of the elementary work that wasn't done because some of our first projects came in a little bit over. But now that we're back on track financially, I think it makes total sense to add this back in.
Well, I think that was our biggest concern from the very beginning. You know, because we saw that trend of being over, 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 where we're going to have enough to finish everything, you know? And you're right, Lance, that now if we're in that position where we can do this, let's not wait any longer, you know? But I am, I'm going to piggyback on what Jane said. I, I am concerned when I saw that open spot in between. I, I do hope that we're protected there in, let it be digitally or whatever the case might be. It's something that is always a concern for safety and security.
Any other questions?
I'm all for approval of the addition of the bleachers storage and community room at Wausau West.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for saving money so that we could do this. That's the big thing. Next item on the agenda. Education Operations Committee meeting. At the October Education Operations Committee meeting, Assistant Superintendent Josh Figg presented a summary report presenting all legal counsel expenses incurred during the first quarter of the 2024-25 school year or year. The report is broken down by the law firm and by type of legal advice sought. This is a written report that requires no action. Any additional items to that? Josh? If not, okay. Continue to move on. Item number nine, new business. At, at the October Education Operations Committee meeting, Mr. John Winter and Darren Peterson presented new course requests in high school technology for recommendation to the full board. I don't believe there's any follow-up on that, but we do have a motion. I'm seeking a motion to approve the new robotics class at both Wausau East and Wausau West. Any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item. At the October Education Operations Committee meeting, John Uding, Ralph Williams, and several librarians presented the Wausau School District Long Range Library Plan. Any additional items at this point? Okay. If not, I'm seeking a motion to approve of the Wausau School District Long Range Plan for submission to DPI and the implementation.
Second.
Any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. At the October Education Operations Committee meeting, Ralph Williams presented the 2024-25 Student demographic report. Any additional items?
There are none.
No, not at this time. Thank you very much. Following up and continuing, health insurance update. At the October Education Operations Committee meeting, Mr. Figgut shared with the board a presentation on the recommended health insurance update. Mr. Parise from M3 Insurance was also available for questions. We'll put the motion on the table. And if there are any questions, we will start at that time. I'm seeking a motion to approve the proposed changes to the Wausau School District Health Insurance effective January 1st, 2025.
So move. Second.
We have a first, we have the motion, and then we have the second. With that, we'll open it up for questions. And I'll turn to the board for any questions that you may have at this point in time after looking at the information for the last two weeks.
Mr. Boucher, can I just say that we did add a couple more informational slides? Would you like us to walk through those?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just as a reminder, we are looking at making changes to our deductible and our maximum out-of-pocket expenses. So John, if you don't mind just walking through what those, what those changes are.
Sure. Just a reminder, as Josh said, the only two things that are changing are the deductible and out-of-pocket maximum. Moving from a $600 deductible for single 1,200 family for the traditional plan to $1,000, $2,000. And then for the other two plans, the qualified high deductible health plans, incrementally increasing them by the same amount. So by increasing, you know, $400 for single, $800 for family, that moves the other two plans to a $2,000 single, $4,000 family. And then you can see the max out-of-pocket changes. I do think we covered those last time, but the max out-of-pocket changes are moving from $3,000, $6,000 to $4,000, $8,000. And one reminder on, on both of these, both of them keep you competitive as a district because the max out-of-pockets are lower than the average. The slides that we added were related to, sometimes, sometimes I think we think it's unique to the district, what's, what's changing. It's not only not unique to this district, it's not unique to central Wisconsin or the state or even on a national basis. So we just wanted to add a few things along those lines. While we know it's not something people are going to feel good about, it does help to understand that it's, it's not an aberration that's occurring just at, at this district or in central Wisconsin. Medical inflation continues to outpace the Consumer Price Index. So we are seeing that some of the healthcare trends, including the widespread use of expensive specialty medications, the physician and clinician staffing shortages, pent-up demand. We still see supply and demand issues, which is why sometimes it's hard to get in. We know that that's true. And finally, the, the medical inflation issues are made a little bit worse by the somewhat less lack of competition in central Wisconsin. We just wanted to show a slide related to that. If you see on this slide, you can see where medical health, medical care, healthcare is outpacing inflation. The gap was closed because we all know CPI went up. So it's closing a little bit, but it's, it's still quite a bit, over 30% difference between the two and something that continues to rise. And the next slide shows part of what we saw still creeping into 2024 is that during the pandemic, you see that, that dip in overall health services spending and quite a spike after that. But we thought the spike would, would go down a little bit further than it has. And it seemed to have continued that pent-up demand. And the last new slide shows that if, if you look at the state of Wisconsin, our state is not a great state as it relates to healthcare inflation to begin with. But if you break it down by region, north-central Wisconsin struggles a little bit more in the way of costs. Our average annual cost is $18,466 per employee. And it's different than that for the northeast, southeast, south-central, and western parts, which is usually the case. It's not unique to our last trend report. And a lot of people do ask why, you know? What is it about north-central Wisconsin that's causing these costs to go up? Believe it, believe it or not, our average age is a little bit higher. We do see a scenario where there's less competition. Some people think it's that we're part of a beer and bread culture in, in, in central Wisconsin. So there, there may be some truth to that. But I, I do think the number one reason is that with less healthcare competition in general, the availability of healthcare then gets squeezed even further. And it's not always an area where we can attract medical providers, which, which doesn't always help either. So that, that's what we're seeing in north-central Wisconsin. I don't really have much else to add, but we want to make sure we answer anybody's questions related to the topic.
Just one other point on the, the reimbursement, I guess. I don't know if you guys get into it much in your actuarial things, but what people sometimes don't realize is that the healthcare policy that happens in Washington DC impacts everyone here specifically regarding Medicare reimbursement. And there's been a, in the, in the current administration's policy, there's been a three-year reduction in Medicare reimbursement rates to all providers who are taking Medicare patients, right? So anybody 65 or over. The population continues to get older, so that population group is going up. The federal government is funding less of that. Well, guess where those costs end up going? So it's, it's kind of a, a full circle thing where some people don't think, well, that's a Medicare cut. It doesn't impact me. It does because those are the same providers that are seeing the Medicare patients that are seeing, you know, everybody in our, in our health plans as well.
It's very true, a very true comment and something we see here in central Wisconsin. In fact, if you ask the provider systems, if you, if you went to Marshfield Clinic and you went to Aspiris and said, what's the number one reason why costs are so high for the commercial purchaser of healthcare? And that's what they, that's what they call. And that's what they, that's what they call it when it's employer-sponsored healthcare, their commercial block of business. And they're going to tell you it's Medicare reimbursement, because they're making up for it, just like you're saying. They're making up for their losses on Medicare by charging more in the commercial space for all employers. It's not, they don't single out any employers or charge you guys, you know, sort of more than they would a different employer. But it is crunching the system.
The good news, there is hope that that policy will be reversed in the coming, in the coming months, because there's clear recognition. It not only puts a strain on everybody else, but the seniors themselves, I think they're expected to have to pay about $2,900 more a year for Medicare, Medicare Advantage Plan. So it hits everyone.
And it doesn't help that Madison keeps turning away billions of dollars for Medicare.
Well, yeah, Medicaid is different, but.
But they all, that money all goes into our system. And if we're not getting it, it's not going into our system and it's not helping us financially.
Yeah, all very relevant and true comments. And we'd like to change things overnight and flip a switch, but it's going to be a progression towards something that's more favorable, hopefully.
I guess I have a lot of questions, but I don't think this is the venue for those answers to be given. But I will just ask one question. You said, John, about the fact that the lack of competition in central Wisconsin. My understanding, and I'm not going to go out on a limb and say that, but we may not have even the competition we do have right now in the near future, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? Or you don't want a lot of?
Not entirely, and I won't expound on it to your point. We'll keep it brief. But you know, it is true that there are really two major provider systems. There are a lot of smaller systems, but there's two major provider systems, being Aspiris and the second one being Marshfield Clinic. And Marshfield Clinic has been acquired by Sanford Health. And Sanford Health still will be a competitor in the area of Aspiris, in my opinion. But I also agree that the more merging that we see, the more consolidation, the more of a challenge that becomes.
Some people like consolidation. You lose the competition when you consolidate all your opponents. So any other questions? I don't see a lot of answers for this problem. But go ahead, Sarah.
Sorry, we had some meetings for staff. Can you talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, so we had, we held four optional virtual meetings for staff that were both information sessions where they were shared pretty much the same information. And then we opened it up for Q and A. And we had pretty healthy engagement, both in terms of number of attendees and in terms of the interaction with the attendees. So there were some certainly difficult questions and difficult conversations, but I definitely would like to thank the staff for their engagement. You can tell that they care and they follow what's going on. So.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained.
Abstention, one abstention and a no. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, student fees for 2025, 2026. At the October Education Operations Committee meeting, the suggested 2025, 26 student fees were presented. And we have a little bit more information, Mr. Uding?
Yeah, two very, very minor changes we wanted to draw to your attention. And they pertain to the areas that were presented before. In science, under that first column, middle column actually, which is Wausau East, the word semester had been course. So we changed that to semester. It's just a word change from course to semester. And then underneath it, what had been presented to you was $3 for Wausau East. And that agro-science, that should have been $5. So we changed course to semester and moved it to $5, and it matches west now. Those were the two only updates to what you saw the last time.
Okay. With that, I'm seeking a motion to approve of the 2025, 2026 student fees as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're at Agenda Item 10 already at this point in time. I'm going to turn to the board. Is there any additional items? Any growth in development programs that you've attended or like to share? If not, we can just move right along and go right to Mr. Sellers' delivery on Legislative Leasong Update.
We had CISA 9 monthly meeting last Wednesday night and just talked about expenditures and revenues, how CISA gets its money and spends it and is sort of a nonprofit. Everything comes in and goes back out to serve the districts and the students. There will be a WASP advocacy meeting workshop this Thursday evening up there, which I will be attending, to talk about the things that WASP is going to be working on, how school board members can help out, you know, the next legislative session with the budget discussions coming up. And might be interesting, the way the elections have turned out in the state, to see how schools fare this time with the things I hear about, so making some deals to get the governor what he wants and the Republican-controlled legislature what they would like to see. So schools might gain a little bit this year, is the things I hear at the moment.
Any sidebars that gave you any indication that that was going to be taking place?
I can't blow his sources.
Well, I was at a meeting on Friday, director's meetings for WASP. And I'd like to hear what you had to hear from CISA, you know, so.
I made new relationships with my five months of my adventure, I'll say. So I get to hear, get to hear other things. It depends upon, it just depends upon how, who wants to give and what they want to do, trade off on. So.
That seminar is at the end of this week, if I'm not mistaken. As you stated, that's open to all board members, correct?
Yes.
And if anyone from our board would like to go up to CISA 9 to meet some of the legislators, that would be a good opportunity.
This one isn't the legislative conference that CISA holds. This one is just put on by WASP. And yeah, it's just their coordinators to go over things and to help board members learn how to, you know, press the school issues with legislators when you're able to engage.
And they do a wonderful job in giving ideas on what you can do as individual board members, talking with legislators. And I know that they put a lot of time into it beforehand. So there will be some interesting days ahead of us. Anything else?
No, that's all.
That's it?
Thank you.
Okay. Continue on Superintendent Commentary, Mr. Bushman?
Just four quick points. One, Mr. Boucher said at the start of the meeting, but I'd also like to thank our veterans, both inside the district and outside of the district, for all of their sacrifices and commitment. Tied into that, I'd also like to thank Mrs. Landerman and her students from Hewitt, Texas. I was struck during the Pledge of Allegiance how wonderful of a noise it is when small children are reciting the Pledge of Allegiance in front of things. So that was really cool to see. With the consent agenda, Susan Holster was promoted to the Assistant Principal position. Her interim tag was taken off and she's now officially an Associate Principal at Wausau East. She was a counselor at John Muir for several, quite a few years, has done a great job there, has been wonderful in the position as Associate Principal. So maybe can I congratulate Susan on her position? The only other thing that I have is just informational. Our Elementary Task Force is meeting for the eighth time this Wednesday at Wausau East starting at 5:30. Really encouraging people who are interested in the process to show up for it and observe it. We're starting to get into the nitty-gritty of having some discussions about school options. So it would be good for people to be interested. If you're not able to make it to Wausau East, Diana White's done a wonderful job of putting all the information that we've discussed throughout the whole time on our website. So certainly it's something that you're available for and to be able to see. So that's it for me.
So that's a welcome for the community members that are not in the committee to be able to come and at least watch and hear what's going on. So it would be something I think we all should encourage our community members to be at. I don't believe there have been a lot of community members at these meetings. I don't know that, because I haven't been at the meetings. I don't believe any of the board members have been at the meetings. But we have not had a lot of community people there, correct?
One, one so far. So and that could be a byproduct of there is a lot of information at people's fingertips that they don't need to be present to know what's going on with it. But we certainly would encourage as many people. It's at Wausau East, there is space. We'd encourage you to show up for it.
There's also a lot of carryover from one meeting to the next. So not to discourage anyone from coming, but to only go to one meeting, it'd be a little difficult to catch up, I would think, unless you've really studied all the presentations and all the information from before that. Because, you know, they've got 10 hours into it already when you arrive at the eighth meeting.
Diana, I'm going to take the moment to thank you for keeping us abreast of what's going on. It is very meticulously identified that anyone could pick up the documents and really read what has been taking place. So I'd like to thank you for doing that and continue to do that. Thank you. All right, next item, Agenda Item Number 11. I'm seeking a motion to enter into closed session to discuss evaluation and goals of Superintendent of Schools, 19.851C.
Second.
Second. We'll have a roll call.
Sarah Brock? John Creacher?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Joanna Reyes? Jane Roche? Corey Sellers?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes. Thank you very much. We are now into closed session.